To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's thank everyone for attendance. If the minutes can reflect the, we'll call the various trustees and boardroom officials. I'm going to go ahead and move on to item 9A. Since Amy is here, and I'm sure she, since she's got a new location out in the town, we don't need to bore her with a village budget. So, we're going to move on to item A. That's a resolution commending Amy Plato in her years of service to the Village of Graffin. Client Commission, come on up.
So, we're going to, again, there's, there's special times where I think it's appropriate for us to recognize individuals when they go out of their way to not only dedicate the time to various committee commissioners in the village, but also bring a level of expertise and experience that adds a lot of value to the organization. In this particular case, I've worked with Amy for, how long have you been on client commission?
Thirteen years.
For thirteen years on client commission. And I, you know, I'm just completely impressed with, you know, her, not only her professionalism, but what she's been able to bring to the client commission as far as the experience and the areas that, you know, an engineer in the areas around stormwater and things like that, that just, we just didn't have. And she's been able to provide that insight and that ability to help lead the discussion at client commission, to help us make correct decisions for specific projects and also for direction for the village as a whole. So, I think from my, you know, from my perspective, I just wanted to make sure that I wanted to recognize Amy for her participation on client commission for these last thirteen years. So, we did create a resolution, and I'll just read the first couple paragraphs. Whereas Amy Plato was stepping down from the Village of Graffin Client Commission on October 1st, 2019, after having volunteered her time to serve the people of the Village of Graffin and the community. Whereas Ms. Plato has served in the client commission since being appointed in May 2006. Fee further resolved that the village board and the village staff of the Village of Graffin be hereby wish Ms. Plato the very best and thank her for all her contributions to the village, resolve this 21st day of October 2019. Congratulations.
Thank you. One few words. It has been a pleasure working with all of the client commissioners throughout my thirteen years. It's a pleasure to serve the Village of Graffin for so long. There's been so many changes, and it's been really an exciting time for the village over those years, and really an exciting time for me to be a part of that. So, thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure.
And no, you don't have to stick it on.
All right.
Yep.
Good point. All right, so that is the resolution. So, I hear your motion. I'll offer motion second.
I'll offer.
Motion.
Second.
Offer motion second. Our favor, I propose that resolution passes. Okay, let's move back. Let's move on to purpose of, of tonight's agenda items is the public hearing for the 2020 proposed annual program budget. So, will you give a statement of notice, please, Kate?
The purpose of this public hearing is for public review and comments on the proposed 2020 budgets, annual program budgets, and respective levy.
Okay. We did have a committee of the whole at our last boardroom meeting, and we discussed that blank detail tonight after polling various staff and people in the audience. Agreement is, let's go ahead and just shoot for some highlights, and then let's go all the way up to the public.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Diving into the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget, really looking at the guidelines, really the framework for that budget. And the top two items are in bold print because those are the two main guiding factors to how this budget was crafted. Compliance with the state's expenditure restraint program guidelines and compliance with the state's tax levy limits. With that, we also wanted to maintain a reasonable property tax rate, maintain in accord with village board, village board policy and uncommitted fund balance greater than 25%, which we have accomplished with this budget proposal, maintaining village infrastructure and roads, and then maintaining quality services delivered by the village. As I mentioned, the expenditure restraint program was a very significant guideline in crafting this budget. Expenditure restraint applies to general fund expenses and to the tax levy support of all other funds excluding debt service, and it also is not applicable to utility and capital expenses. With that, a slight update here. We did get our final expenditure restraint numbers, so we are limited to a 2.64% or just over a $297,000 increase in expenditures. With that, we, that is a downtick from what was presented at the workshop. Therefore, our final expenditure restraint numbers did require moving levy support from the capital fund to the general fund, and then we plugged that gap in the capital with capital, capital expense fund balance to maintain all of the scheduled projects. We have healthy fund balance in the capital fund, therefore making that a reasonable changeover from the initial proposal and more comforting than anything else to maintain compliance with the expenditure restraint program. It was either that option or we moved money or reduced general fund expenses, which are razor thin as is. With that, we maintain compliance and shared revenue payments in excess of $105,000. The note on bottom there across all funds, the village budget calls for a 1.73% expenditure increase, and again, that's across all funds. Expenditure restraint only applies to the funds I mentioned above. So, compliance with tax levy limits, this is a big one. This is state law. Based upon the equalized value of net new, of new construction during the previous 12 months, we are able to increase our tax levy by just south of $112,000 or 1.44%. We do allocate that or utilize that adjustment to the full extent of the $111,831. So, the final levy proposal for the coming year is just over $7.8 million. Quick tax levy calculation, just to show what the adopted levy is from last year, that net new construction value, quick math addition, we get to the proposed 2020 tax levy, again, So, looking to maintain a reasonable tax rate. A lot goes into this. We have, as discussed at committee level and also at the board level to an extent, there is a disparity between our assessed value as a village and the state's equalized property valuation. That ratio between the two is stands at 81%, or out of compliance with the, within five or 10% of the 100, basically where they match each other. That said, the village valuation has been unchanged or stagnant since about 2014, when a statistical revaluation was done. However, the state's equalized value has continued to increase year over year, and that is how this disparity has come to light. That said, we do have a revaluation pending with activities starting here in the village to update our overall property, assessed property values village-wide. We do have other taxing jurisdictions at or near that 100% or matching level of assessed equalized property value. With that being said, our assessed valuation, to apply that to a tax rate to generate the levy that I just discussed, we'd be looking at a $7.32 village tax rate per $1,000 of value. That's up 1.77% or 12.8 cents per 1,000 of value from last year. Now, I must inform the board, this is our best, and our best estimate coming forward. We do not have our manufacturing valuation numbers from the state of Wisconsin yet. We have been, been in contact with both the county and the state. We are one of thirty to forty communities statewide that the manufacturing numbers are not finalized. There are much bigger communities out there. Waukesha, Glendale, Oak Creek, Franklin, nearby Brownier Bayside do not have their manufacturing numbers. Slinger Jackson, also Leavers, that do not have these manufacturing values. So, that being said, that tax rate that I'm showing here to generate the levy that I discussed is the worst-case scenario. That is, would not increase from there. Manufacturing values come back in our favor. That tax rate would actually drop to generate the levy that is proposed for the 2020 budget. So, without those manufacturing numbers, staff did not want to put forth an educated guess for the village board. We wanted to put forth what the worst-case scenario would look like based upon last year's numbers and what we can calculate with what we know as far as this equation to come up with the tax rate. Now, moving into the notion of the equalized tax rate, because from time to time, it can be a question based upon whether the property ratio or how the school district utilize, generates their tax bill. The school district actually utilizes the equalized tax rate. Therefore, you'll see the difference between the tax rates, and if we, the village, could use the equalized value set forth by the state, our tax rate would actually drop from last year. Because again, the state's equalized property value has continued to market rate adjust year over year, whereas ours is state stagnant. So, with that, if we could use it, our tax rate would drop. Unfortunately, we are bound to using assessed valuations here in the village, therefore we are looking at an uptick in the tax rate. With regards to meeting that goal and maintaining a reasonable property tax rate, we are looking at about a 1.8% increase in the tax rate. The Consumer Price Index that we were able to get updated one-year period from the Bureau of Labor Statistics came in at 1.9, so we are below the Consumer Price Index for a possible tax rate adjustment. So, again, maintaining that reasonable aspect of any sort of a tax rate adjustment. What does this mean for an average home here in the village? Looking at a comparison of last year's 2019 adopted tax rate to this year's, we're looking at about a difference of $18.50 for the year or about $1.54 per month. That is what that $7.32 tax rate would mean as a difference on the village's portion of a property tax bill for a $250,000 home. And again, I would like to stress, these do not include the final manufacturing values, so that tax rate would adjust accordingly. Looking at our overall budget summary, this is a tightly crafted budget due to the financial constraints being expenditure restraint and levy free. Across all funds, we are looking at a just south of a 5% increase in revenues, and mostly, and mostly that is due to borrowing for, or proposed borrowing for the First Avenue project to reconstruct a portion of First Avenue, and then also recognizing some increment generated by the tax incremental financing districts. We are seeing a 1.4, we have programmed a 1.73% rise in expenditures across all funds. Debt service contribution does remain static. We did have to, in essence, battle to fit in the health insurance premium, liability insurance premium, significant increases on both fronts there. And then we did have the big project, our revaluation project that we had planned because of that ratio disparity that we need to address. And it was a decision here to coactively address that instead of waiting for notification from the state. But that said, it's a significant expenditure within our budget. Cost of living adjustments and merit increases are programmed, both for represented and non-represented staff as part of this budget. Looking forward to general fund expenditures from year to year and the similarity thereof, keeping it a high level here. You can see the allocations for the different program areas remain consistent from one year to the next. Obviously, the expenditures did uptick slightly for 2020, but by percentage and how dollars are allocated, revenues are allocated, very consistent from year to year. Another way to look at that in a pie chart, really breaking it down a little bit further, and also to speaking to public safety and public works being largest pieces of the pie, not to pick on those departments. It's just the nature of their operations, being people and, and/or equipment and/or supplies. And then the smaller pieces of the pie get into general government, basically being village hall, parking rec, what had to be conservation and development, and then the unclassified portions of the budget. Skipping forward into allocation, allocations by category across all the funds, you're looking at about 25% of the budget is taken up as, or allocated as capital improvement expenses, being equipment and/or projects. Debt service is about 15% of our overall budget. Utilities or proprietary funds are just over 16.5%. General fund is 32, almost 33%. And the special revenue funds being library, fire, park facilities, et cetera, come in at 11.2%. That fiduciary fund, which does not mathematically register on the graph, is the cemetery. It's, it's that particular fund. But obviously, it is an allocation. It just doesn't mathematically calculate into this pie chart. Looking at, you know, a driver for a responsible budget is continuing to reduce debt service levels for the village. The 2020 budget has the same allocation of tax levy applied towards debt service. The balance of the debt service payments are primarily through the tax incremental financing districts. Overall debt service expenses do increase just because of the way the debt is structured within the tax incremental financing districts. There is no tax rate impact associated with that. Our current debt capacity is at, our ratio is at 44%. State law does dictate how much a, a community can carry in debt as based upon their overall valuation. And currently, we sit at 44. With the proposed debt service in 2020 for the First Avenue reconstruction and a portion thereof of the Headworks Building, we would be looking at upticking that to a 51%, but just over half of what we could potentially or in total carry for debt as a village. At any time, as with all other years, we review any callable debt, possible refinancing savings as we can. We lean heavily on Alars, our financial advisor, for that review year over year, not only with general debt, but also within our tax incremental financing districts as well. So, any, any refinancing savings we can find, we will look to present that to take advantage there. As I mentioned, one of the goals for the 2020 budget is maintaining infrastructure and roads. Through a combination of efforts, we are looking at addressing one point, just over one mile of road, being in the form of First Avenue, 13th Avenue, kicking off or the inaugural year of a road maintenance program. Now, this is a hybrid effort brought forward by Director Thomas to help get more bang for our buck over time. To, to use an analogy, this, this is starting to turn the battleship, where it's going to be a very gradual change in strategy in addressing road maintenance here in the village, because historically, it's been rebuilt. Let's replace these utilities underneath and the road surface and the curb and gutter, all in one shot. And as we all know, those are big projects. Those are very pricey. So, that does limit the village's ability year over year to fund road maintenance projects, or our road improvement projects. So, with the introduction of road maintenance efforts with chip sealing technologies, and these are above and beyond what we do for crack sealing, mind you. That, that's a completely separate item. That, that falls under street materials. But chip sealing is one of the primary, and there's different forms of that technology, where you're resurfacing the road in, in different manners to improve the quality of that road, because underneath, we're all good. It's the surface that, that's needs replacing. So, in time, the ideal goal here will be to shift to less, the need for less reconstruction and the ability to do more road maintenance, which is cheaper to do, and therefore we can improve a larger amount of mileage, road mileage, over time. So, it, it's, it's going to take time to get there, but these are the initial steps in, in moving forward with that program, along with some replacement projects being First Avenue and 13th Avenue. Sidewalk rehab, that is a pretty substantial uptick. We are looking to catch up from deferred work from this last year. As you may recall, road project bids came in high here this year, so we reallocated funds from the sidewalk program into road replacement funds to finalize that for this year. So, looking to catch back up in that aspect. Utility infrastructure projects, the Headworks Building, meter replacement program, lift station updates, and as part of that First Avenue project, sewer remining. As always, there are building maintenance allocations throughout every other department's budget. Jumping into capital equipment highlights, we are looking at equipment update, or equipment replacements for several departments. Front loader and attachments for public works. It is two marked police squads. The budget number that was presented at the workshop was correct. My slide isn't correct. My slide knew it three marked squads. It's actually two marked squads. The budget allocation is the same, though. That is unchanged. Video surveillance upgrade, that is to the police station itself for updating the cameras. That is actually split. Looking to find flexibility to, again, meet that expenditure restraint limitation that we had. That is broken apart. That's a $35,000 project, broken apart between the tail end of 2020 and the start of 2021. So, appreciate the flexibility offered there through the police department in managing that project. A six-wheeler vehicle, in essence, a gator by the fire department for remote access. Lions den, brush fires out of the town. There will be water spraying apparatus available on that as well. Replacement of the paramedic first response vehicle, and then the apparatus for maintenance as well. Continuing with the capital project highlights, road and sidewalk programs totaling just over $1.2 million, and then a couple of projects to be funded as needed. Environmental remediation within tax incremental district number three, in essence, targeting Clark Station should become, come to reality. The need to be funded, and then Shady Hollow Park improvements as needed. Those are programmed into the budget. Switching gears a bit with the capital expenditures into the utilities. Again, mentioned the headworks, the water meter conversion. We are looking at 17th Avenue lift station, basin improvements throughout the Green Bay Road area. That's stormwater driven. It is not a specific lift station. It is basin improvements in the area. Phosphorus control, these are DNR mandated efforts that we need to follow through upon to meet regulations regarding, obviously, phosphorus levels and the First Avenue sewer remining that I did mention. Funding sources are notably debt service and utility revenues or cash on hand. Maintaining quality services. Well, this is a tight budget. We do maintain all current municipal services. Through the public works, facility upkeep, fowling, assaulting, forestrying sidewalks, road maintenance, public safety, lobby staffing, the fire EMS coverage, utilities, the facility maintenance and upgrades, and then the meter program, and general village operations being election. It's a four election cycle next year with the primaries and the generals. Those are funded appropriately. And then ongoing funding for amenities such as park and library facilities are programmed accordingly. We meet the road repair goal of exceeding one mile, and then it is a fiscally conservative budget. I worked very closely, and hats off to all of the departments in their ability to be flexible with what was requested and what, how they could prioritize projects and equipment and their needs in order for us to bring this budget into compliance with that state expenditure restraint program. And so, hats off to them. I, I must call that out as part of this public hearing, because I could not do this alone. They know their priorities. They know their operations, and they, and they work very closely with me, and I appreciate their time, energy, and effort as this budget was put together. With that, there is a responsible use of fund balance program within the budget. That is to help with the overall funding of the program areas. And that said, that is the 2020 budget. What's next? Our next meeting, we look to adopt the budget and establish the tax levy. That is on the 18th. Tax bill distribution will be that first Friday in December, and then we get to start budgeting all over again next spring with capital planning matters. So, that is the 2020 budget proposal.
Okay, thank you. Real quick, Paul, with the county and state note of our timeline for adopting 2020 budget for two weeks from now?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, it's public hearing, so we'll open it up to public discussion, questions for staff and our board. We have a sign-up sheet. It'll be signed up, so I'll open it up to public for any comments, questions on the budget. Yes, sir?
Bill Harbeck, I just have one quick question. On the timing of the numbers you need regarding manufacturing, what's the anticipated date for that? And I assume it's going to be before you adopt the budget.
That was, still is the question we need to have before, in the next two weeks. They, they are released every Thursday. The new equalized values are released every Thursday. We were hoping to have them in advance of tonight's meeting. Clearly, you do not. So, we will continue to burn down the homes, reaching out to county and state representatives to, in an effort to get those valuations so that we can have a final and exact tax rate. The levy is proposed. That would not change based upon the manufacturing values. What would be impacted would be that village tax rate. So, that is the priority here of getting those manufacturing numbers. And again, they're released every Thursday of each week, and so we will wait patiently and continue to burn it down the comments. So.
Thank you. All right, I'll open it up to the board for any questions, any new information, anything that you'd like clarification on since the last met on the public, on the, on the workshop meeting.
Just to, I had stopped in, Jesse, and talked with you about probably a dozen different corrections to the budget, minor numbers that don't affect anything, but just, and I'm assuming, I mean, that's not something that you need to produce sheets for, you know, immediately, and I'm assuming those have been incorporated?
If they have not been already, we did do a series of updates as the yellow sheets were provided to the board. That really is the expenditure restraint program finalization, and how you can see that ripple effect through the entire budget where it affects multiple sheets. We were able to catch some of those. All of them will be incorporated into the final draft of the budget, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that being said, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing and move on to the regular agenda. So, any staff, boardroom heads that are here just for budget, be more than welcome to take your leave at this time. Be more than welcome to stick around for the rest of the budget, the rest of the meeting. All right, let's move on to item six. I can motion for approval of the 1021 2019 Committee of the Whole in the 1021 Village Board Meeting Minutes and the file of the 916 2019 Police and Fire Commission, the 918 Parking Rec Board, 924 Client Commission Meeting Minutes as presented.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion second. As always, any comments, questions, clarifications on the minutes?
Mr. President.
Yes, sir?
Page two of the village board meeting minutes, under Officers Reports. Department of Officers Reports, Rusty Krieger asked about the Ayres, the Ayres letter, and I think you're referring to the Ayres, Ayres and Associates, A-Y-R-E-S.
It was Ayres and Omissions by Ayres.
Yes.
So, we may, we may. One of the Ayres was missing. You're right.
Yes.
All right, motion second. With that correction being made, our favor.
All right.
And close. That motion passes. Anybody in the audience wishing to be heard on another agenda item? Let's move forward. Any materials have been distributed in an old-fashioned. Item nine, resolution, ordinance, action items. We've taken up item A already. Let's move on to item B, report of the client commission. Report of client commission, we have one item that's ordinance amendment to the Graffin Comments PUD to divide the former Best Buy into two commercial retail tenants, TJ Maxx and five below, and construct a 2385 square foot building in addition for TJ Maxx be approved.
Make the motion.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second, comments, questions on that item? Scaring on, Jessica, anything you wish to add?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item C is a report of the Park and Rec, and that is one item. Motion to accept Riverbend Park as recommended name for the future South Side Park, be approved.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second, comments, questions?
If I could to be absolutely clear, it is Riverbend, two separate distinct words, so just as, just a point of clarification as it's written on the agenda.
That being clarified, Johnny, anything to add?
No, Tom was looking, but Jessica clarified that today with the developer, it is Riverbend, so our park should be Riverbend.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item 10, Department of Officers Reports, a plethora of representation tonight. Anybody have any questions for them? Anything that they wish to pass back to the board?
Jesse, I asked at the last meeting about the MasterCard bill, and I have not gotten a response on that.
That is my oversight, I will make sure to get that to board.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Question for you, Amber. I noted in our disbursements that we had a huge payment out to Rooker and Milky for the SCADA upgrade. Do you know if that project is complete now, or is that?
I don't know. I can check into it and let you know I'm not positive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, with that being said, let's move on to licenses. We have the request for operator's license, one person, and their place of employment.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Let's move on to item 12, report of the bills, entertaining motion for the approval of village expenditures, $294,645.72.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion is second, as always, comments, questions, clarifications on the bills?
Thank you. On page four and five, page four, there's a $292 disbursement to Eric Crowe for uniform allowance. That's kind of a large amount. I thought that we were, we were providing them with uniforms, and the only thing we really paid for was replacement of safety shoes up to a limit of $100, so I'm not sure what this all covers.
The uniform policy changed for utility this year, so the plant operators that work in the wastewater treatment plant are still wearing the same uniforms they've worn in the past and have minimal stuff, but the field operators that are out in the field are now kind of simulating what DPW crew persons do and get reimbursed for boots and clothes that match the uniform policy. And guessing would it mean that much, that's probably his entire year's budgets than it was.
Is that a change that needs to be updated in our employee policy manual?
It is going to match, yes. Prior to this update project with the employee manual that Finance Committee is currently undertaking, it was standalone departmental uniform policies. With that, I want to incorporate it into the overall employee manual, so that will be coming forward and adopted as such, but right now, they continue to be standalone departmental policies.
Okay, thank you. On page eight of batch two, under M squared engineering, the description of the expenditures for the future South Side Park grading plan, but it's under Shady Hollow Park general account title. I don't know if that's a misprint. They're not the same park.
Correct. We'll look to see how that was booked. You are absolutely correct, there are different parks, different locations. We'll verify how that was booked specifically.
Thank you. Then one last item, page 14 of batch two, utility service company, we're paying a number of charges for our annual service agreement with the utility service, but Tower Two is, looks like it's been double paid at $11,415. Why are we sending two checks for the same amount? Shouldn't it be just one payment?
We'll verify whether that is based in back-to-month payments for back-to-back payments or if that is a duplicate that was entered. We'll verify that and report back.
Looks like a duplicate, so please, please check that.
Absolutely.
All right, that's all.
Other questions? All right, with those corrections and research to be done, any more, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Item 13, motion to adjourn. All right, so we don't be here all night.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We adjourn, thank you all very much.